Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:31 PM on this thirteenth day of October 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7th, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Please note, Mrs. Victoria Manning is not present this evening due to a family matter. And we, it is the School Board's protocol, a break at 5:30, give or take, to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to begin at 6 o'clock. So, at 5:30 PM, the School Board will conclude its informal meeting unless we, the School Board votes to continue the informal meeting until 5:45 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in School Board chambers tonight are Mrs. Rye, Mrs. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Felton, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Riggs. Attending via Zoom is Ms. Hughes and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. So, it men matters. Before I open it up for anyone else, a few things for me to run through quickly. Last, last week, I had the, the honor of representing of all of you to offer welcome remarks, marks to the Council of PTA's inaugural meeting of the year. And that was, that was via Zoom, including council, uh, unit presidents from our various schools and, and their assorted board members, and of course, the council board themselves. And, you know, conveyed on behalf of all of us how much we appreciate, and in these times more than ever, that they're with, with the focus that they need on their own families and own children, that they are stepping up in, in their broader PTO, PTA role, roles, respective roles for the benefit of all our children. On a similar note, and Dr. Spence may speak more to this later, but the Teacher Forum had its first meeting just yesterday, like last, yesterday afternoon. And again, on behalf of you, all of you, I have prepared remarks that I'll be emailing to, to Rachel Thompson, our Teacher of the Year, for her to share with her members. And adopted schools, you all, the email was sent from, from our Madam Clerk. And keep in mind that tour date that she's asked for feedback on. And the limit was noted for touring the two new, they're all good, and John B. Die. And if we reach that limit, then certainly we'll, we'll look for a, a backup date for anybody. So, nobody's going to be left out. Uh, the VSBA Convention, November 18th to 20th, I think you all are aware, is virtual this year. And I'll be speaking with, with our clerk about just getting out a request to all of you so that we keep, so that we can entertain interest level for participation this year. And I'll be touching base with Mrs. Felton, as well as our, one of our regional officers, okay? And finally, just a reminder, there was an email from me that when we, at the beginning of the formal meeting this evening, there will be a motion introduced with regard to one of the consent items that we will be asking that the reimbursement of employee legal fees be removed temporarily in anticipation of the, of the closed meeting session we will have on the topic. And that will, that will, that will be after the hearing of non-agenda speakers. So, that's what I have. Anybody else? All right, then. With that, we will begin with our Agenda Item B, Open Educational Resources Update. And we are here, Mr. Delaney is here to get us started today. So, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. My name is Matt Delaney, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. We are here to provide you with information regarding our current efforts in the area of Open Educational Resources, commonly referred to as ORE. Sorry about that, OER. With me today is Ms. Bridget Mariano, Secondary STEM and Innovation Specialist with the Department of Teaching and Learning. Since 2018, Bridget has been a key member of the Go Open Virginia Advisory Group. She has been involved in the Go Open Initiative, which has provided professional learning and an OER repository for educators across the division and the state. During the 2019-20 school year, Bridget applied for and received a Go Open Grant and has since formed a team of Virginia Beach City Public School educators. She will be providing additional information on this work. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Mariano.
Welcome. Glad you could be with us this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Good evening. My name's Bridget Mariano. I work with the secondary team in teaching and learning as the STEM and Innovation Instructional Specialist. Today, I'd like to take a few minutes of your time to share with you and update you on the OER initiative in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Specifically, I hope to provide you with an understanding of what open education resources are, why the shift towards OER is so important, how VBCPS is currently involved, and the next necessary steps for us as a Go Open VBCPS Division. So, Open Educational Resources are defined as teaching, learning, and research materials that are either in the public domain or licensed in a manner that provides everyone with free and perpetual permission to engage in what's called the Five-R activities. Those Five-R activities, retaining, remixing, revising, reusing, and redistributing the resources. This might include images, such as the map you see here, individual curriculum resources, like a science laboratory activity, entire textbooks, like CK-12 Flexbooks, or even entire curriculum sets. OER is either in the public domain or licensed with what's called a Creative Commons License, which gives you permissions beyond what would be granted with a typical copyright. The Creative Commons image you see here in the corner, the left bottom corner, for example, indicates this particular work. All you would have to do is give attribution. You're able to adapt it and modify it and use it. And it permits users to keep it and reshare it as they need. So, why is OER important? OER definitely supports both our graduate profile and VBCPS core values by supporting student agency, enabling personalized pathways to our curriculum content, promoting collaboration, and enabling rich, cross-curricular, performance-based, student-led assessments and learning. Another reason OER is very important, the rapid shift to virtual learning as a result of the COVID closures related to COVID-19 has laid bare how important flexibility and responsiveness are to the success of our students. Students who are now in Algebra I, for example, may not have had the opportunity to master all the material that they were expected to last year, last spring, as a result of the closures. OER will enable teachers to pulling content, resources, and even entire textbooks from previous courses as needed to support students' journeys towards mastery. Openly licensed textbooks are not encumbered by strict licensing rules and password-protected access. Students and teachers can retain OER and have access forever, regardless of their association or affiliation with a class, course, or school. OER and the work associated with the Go Open movement align very well with our strategic plan as well. Various strategies within each of the six goals, such as Goal One Strategy Five, that says, "Share teaching practices that foster deeper learning and engagement and are adaptable to diverse student needs." And Goal Two Strategies, Strategy Two, "More deeply integrate social-emotional learning, SEL, into the pre-K-12 curriculum." Those are both ultimately going to be made more possible by the continued implementation of OER and, and our Go Open VBCPS Plan. One goal stands out right away, however, as supported by OER, and that's Goal Six. Goal Six, "Pursue the effective and efficient use of division resources, operations, and processes to support the division's vision, mission, and strategic goals," is clearly supported by OER. The cost of textbooks, whoops, too fast. The cost of textbooks has risen by 200% in the past 20 years. All the while, the cost of computers and other technology has fallen substantially. What's even more important is considering what that money can now buy. Consider cell phones then versus now, for example. Or personal computers then, 20 years ago, versus now. And I think we can all agree that the technology has changed a lot in the last 20 years. Yet textbooks have remained essentially the same. Switching to openly licensed educational materials enables school districts to repurpose funding, typically spent on our textbooks, for other pressing needs, such as investing in the transition to digital learning tools that provide not only teaching and learning resources, but also robust assessment tools that supply much more data and feedback to our students, teachers, coaches, and administrators than any textbooks have ever been able to do. Openly licensed educational resources promote equity by enabling teachers, schools, and entire districts to provide all students access to learning materials, no matter the current budget or procurement practices. Many teachers are already capitalizing on this in their classrooms every day. Instead of one static textbook resource, a collection of resources that suit, suit a variety of learners, both cognitively and effectively, can be developed and shared freely. It is important to note that while OER is free, in one sense, it's not entirely free in reality. The time and human resources necessary to sustain a division-wide OER initiative are notable and something that our division will need to address moving forward. So, how has VBCPS been involved? As mentioned earlier, Virginia Beach has been involved in the Go Open Initiative at the national and state level since about 2016. This work began to form, more formalize in 2018 with the formation of a Go Open VA or Go Open Virginia Advisory Board. And the Go Open Virginia Initiative, which has provided professional learning and a repository, GoOpenVA.org, for educators across Virginia. Throughout the past few years, we've continued to share about OER with various departments within our school division, central support, including presentations for elementary, secondary, and K-12 Department of Teaching and Learning, the Department of Technology, the Department of School Leadership, and senior staff. We have also shared about OER and Creative Commons licensing with the Library and Media Specialists, and Instructional and Technology Specialists, and Teacher Assembly Members through OER workshops. Our current work with OER has resulted in recognition by the U.S. Department of Education. We are currently designated as a Go Open OER Launch District by the Office of Technology. So, this Launch District designation is a result of the work Department of Teaching and Learning has done in the past three years. VBCPS has already incorporated a variety of OER into the OER curriculum resources, and most notably, secondary math with illustrative math resources, science with CK-12 Flexbooks, social studies with primary source collections, and English Language Arts with Common Lit. When coordinators begin to research new textbooks, they're directed by the textbook adoption process to explore OER first and consider those options. In some cases, that has enabled coordinators to delay textbook adoption entirely or to use textbook funds to purchase digital resources like MathSpace, iXL, Gizmos, No Red Ink, for example. As you likely recall, the new TCE Pharmacy Technician Course uses a Flexbook that was curated by the teacher, Kim McIntyre, and her coordinator, Kathleen Bueno. This is the first openly licensed Flexbook that our division has essentially created from scratch. By curating a primary textbook using OER, this left funding available to purchase specific test review materials for those students who are preparing to take the Pharmacy Tech Industry Certification Test. More recently, the secondary science team gathered a group of teachers to go through the, a textbook customization process, which is similar to textbook review processes for a traditional textbook. But in this case, it takes it one step further by allowing and enabling the teachers to actually make changes to improve the textbooks to suit their needs. Last spring, with the support of Dr. Rogers, Dr. Shubridge, Dr. De Vries, and Mr. Delaney, I applied for and was awarded a $10,000 VDOE Go Open Grant, which has, and have since formed a cooperative team of 12 teachers from around Virginia Beach to collaborate on developing an OER curation framework and a set of nine rubrics that will ultimately serve to guide our work on curating, creating, customizing, and sharing high-quality, standard-aligned OER materials to the Go Open VA repository. The teachers involved in this team have gone through extensive training on Creative Commons licenses. And along with the Instructional Technology Specialist and Library and Media Specialist, who were trained last year, will ultimately be the leaders in their buildings for OER. So, as you can see, VBCPS has moved far beyond simply finding free resources and is moving consistently towards customizing and improving on OER at a variety of levels. This progress is only sustainable with ongoing professional learning and time to devote to curating and customizing high-quality OER. Virginia Beach, all right? Virginia Beach is one of the state leaders in OER. As this work continues and we evolve our OER implementation plan and develop a team with an agreed-upon vision, mission, goals, process, and framework, and quality assurance criteria, we've become closer to qualifying as what's called a Go Open Ambassador District, which is the highest OER designation from the U.S. Department of Education. Ambassador Districts must have processes in place to ensure quality and build staff capacity, and to continually evolve for scalability and sustainability. As our staff continue to curate, customize, and create OER, it is important that we support and showcase those teachers and those teacher leaders who've been involved. Their work, along with the work developed by our curriculum teams, can be shared with other teachers in Virginia on the Go Open VA repository. And specific content that has been vetted by our coordinators will ultimately be placed in a Go Open VBCPS hub in that repository. A final step required for us to qualify for the Ambassador District status or designation is to mentor another school district who is interested in becoming a Go Open Launch District and, and help them to design and implement their plan. We've reached out to Dr. Tina Maglemat, CAO of Newport News City Public Schools, and she is interested in this opportunity to partner with us. So, we are well on our way. Thank you so much for your time today. I hope you can appreciate the importance of this work in our division. And at this time, we're prepared to take some questions, if you have them, about OER and our involvement in this Go Open Initiative.
Madam Clerk, we'll rely on you tonight as far as our Zoom participant colleagues. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Edwards.
The, uh, state, the, the Department of Education at the state level is totally supportive. Um, and our, yeah, they're, they've been in a role of, you know, having to bless textbooks. So, are they inserting themselves in, into a similar role to, with, with OER?
Uh, they are providing some guidance in OER. Um, they don't say we can or cannot use OER textbooks, if that's what you're asking. Um, they certainly support using OER. And, and that's, they've, they've been the ones who put, put the repository together.
This may be more of a Pharoah Honsiger question, but, um, is the state potentially ratcheting back on textbook funding as OER becomes more of an option?
Yeah, I certainly am not aware of anything in that regard.
Mr. Edwards, yeah, I mean, as you know, they've been ratcheting back on textbook funding anyway. And so, that's been decreasing over time. And so, you know, we've been working with you all over the last, certainly, six years to look at other opportunities for savings on textbooks. So, you've seen us do some things with like Singage and, and some other online textbooks that have essentially saved some money over time. But yeah, OER is really the direction I think most school districts are looking to go in as those textbook dollars have disappeared. But to the specific question, we've not had any fiscal conversations at the state level related to the elimination of textbook funds in lieu of OER.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Felton?
Thank you for that detailed, um, presentation, as I've always alluded to, that I know that our, the vision along with others would come to this point where technology would be a part of it. But you talked of the teachers being a part of this as well, some of them being, being brought into the process already. But my concern is implementation, more technology with our teachers. And we've had more technology, I guess, base things geared towards them in the last past four months. So, how would this implementation of technology be different from what they've had to run and catch up and do? So, my concern is some feel that they're not as technically savvy as you're pushing them to. So, will there be a time for them to take this all in, breathe, and be able to give it back to the students in a more effective way? So, what are some of the ways that you are implementing this with our teachers and this show up to?
Okay, I can, um, ease your mind on, part of that is that not all, all OER is, it's not necessarily technology-based. It is oftentimes something that is available offline, just so you know. OER could be available offline. In terms of the teacher training, we're always starting with more familiarity. I have a sequence that I have teachers go through that's based up on the VDOE, prepared in Vista, they kind of combined with a Go Open team to prepare four different modules. And it's more of a introduction first, OER introduction to the Go Open VA and, and that initiative. And then we have curate, which is finding the resources and knowing where to look and how to tell how they're licensed, is the next stage, that's the second one. The third one would be, um, customization, where they can actually find something. And because it's openly licensed in a way that they're allowed to remix it and revise it, they can customize it. And so, that's a little bit deeper learning, right? And deeper level of integration where they have to actually customize it. But teachers do that with anything we've handed them over the years. So, that comes kind of naturally to them, is that once you give them something, that's the first thing they want to do is change it and make it and adapt it. And that's what's great, is they can, and they can adapt it for, you know, all the different students' needs. So, that would be the customization. And then the final one is creation. And I, I take that one as the final one, because the creation is really where you're taking your own work, your own personal work, and deciding to go ahead and put an open license on it. Okay, so all, and all through this, starting with the curation, I introduced a set of rubrics that are still, and the rubrics are gonna be ever-evolving as well. But to make sure, there's nine rubrics, to make sure that they're, everything from a lot, starting with aligned to the standards, and then all the way through accessibility for students with special needs, visibility, making sure that they're closed captions if they're using videos, things like that. So, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. And I think you may have kind of answered my question with your last comments for Ms. Felton. Um, I was wondering, when they have textbooks that are totally OER, do we have the option or likelihood to still print them and provide students with actual written copies, if that's a better learning style for them?
Yeah, OER in all, all shapes and forms of OER, that's, that's, you know, something is on a screen and obviously could be printed out. Whether, how easy it is depends on the source. Some of them, it's just a matter of clicking the, a PDF button, and it generates a printable copy of it. Um, so, the answer is yes, they are printable. Of course, there's a cost with printing, but, but yes, they are printable. There are OERs that are simulations and model, you know, like models and simulations and things like that, that obviously you could, could not print, more interactives and things like that.
Mrs. Fel, back to Mrs. Felton?
Yes. Could you elaborate a little bit more on your 12-teacher advisory board for this, uh, concept?
Sure.
That the criteria who was chosen, how were they chosen? And just a small more explanation on it as well?
Sure. Um, it's the secondary team. I, I am a representative from the Secondary Department of Teaching and Learning. And so, when I'm working with teams of teachers, it is typically secondary. So, right now, that 12, that 12-person team is all secondary and primary. Well, there's, there's actually, there's probably a little over half high school and, and then some middle school teachers. Um, I chose teachers, I put out basically an invitation to participate. I had to be careful, because I want, I knew I wanted them to get, um, I didn't want to run out of the money that I would have. And I knew that I wanted them to have enough experiences to really get a lot of variety in. So, for each person, so that's where I came up with 12 or 13 was really where I wanted to cap it. Um, and I selected them, well, I, I reached out to each curriculum coordinator and asked for recommendations, and then sent out the first round of recommendations. Um, and then if they, if they accepted, then I, you know, obviously took them. Um, and everybody, the first round, accepted, which was exciting. So, I have 12 people. They're all various stages of being done with the work, but it's not, it doesn't have to be done until even after December. But they're in the, in process of building resources and everything.
Okay, so were they sort of, maybe you answered it, and I just need more explanation. Was it subject matter, a matter that was based around? Or will this be another phase, so when you go deeper into it, of the subjects, the teachers, the subjects that they mastered? Was it based around it as well?
Um, I, I reached out to, I wanted two representatives from each core, of the core content area. So, two math, two science, two English, two social studies is what I asked for, for recommendations. And world, world languages and special ed, I reached out to as well. Um, they're not in secondary teaching and learning, but I wanted to make sure I had representation from those teams. And, um, so that, that's who I reached out to. So, it was a broad variety. In some cases, both might be high school. But in like math, for example, I have one middle and one high school math.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have an ITS and an LMS. I should probably mention that, too. They're wonderful.
So, I'll, what, what is the period, the grant period?
Um, it began, I, I'm gonna be fuzzy with these dates, and I apologize. But I believe we were awarded the, that we were accepted for this in April. And then everything got kind of delayed and, um, but they were supposed to close out our grant by the end of December. Um, but I put the, for my team, I wanted them to try and close out as early to the end of October as we could. Um, so some of them are actually kind of finished. Um, and some of them need a little bit more time, which is fine, of course. And it's all, if we don't, if, if one person doesn't complete the anticipated goal of six, six different objects, was what we were kind of aiming at, a variety of different from each one. Um, I can certainly shift that to somebody else who's been very productive and might want to do more. So, so we've got some time.
So, for me, I mean, for, I think all of us here, the grant is just still one more example of, of others outside the district, including the grantees, recognizing the, the innovation that goes on in this division, that we, we have a track record and we're always looking for other ways to, to apply that. Mrs. Anderson?
You mentioned that you were partnering with someone in Newport News. Are they doing the same thing in Newport News as we're doing here?
They are not, they are not as involved in this yet as we have been. Um, but they're interested in becoming involved. And Dr. Maglemat actually was in the VDOE, and she was a member of the Go Open VA Advisory. So, she's very familiar with it, and so she, when I- So she's very familiar with it. And so she, when I reached out, it was going to be a, a natural fit, I think, to partner with her because she understands a lot about the initiative already. Um, and then I would be partnering with her to, the same, um, professional learning, for example, that I just described. It would be things that we could modify and adapt for her needs at her district.
You said we were mentoring them, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Oh, we thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much.
So that, that brings us to, uh, more, more reopening updates. It's been three weeks since we last met as a body, but there has certainly been a lot going on. So, uh, with that, welcome, Dr. Bergen.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, Dr. Spence, members of the board, for members of our viewing public. My name is Mark Bergen. I'm the Chief of Staff and it's, uh, my pleasure to be again with you this afternoon to share some updates on the reopening of schools and the support that our entire central leadership team is providing our students and staff during the start of the school year. I'm going to begin this presentation as usual with a review of the current health metrics in the eastern region. And I would like to elaborate for the board and the public on new guidance from the CDC and then subsequently by the Virginia Department of Health or VDH. Uh, I briefly shared some of this information with you at our last board meeting, but there's been, uh, further information since then. And then I'll discuss how our planning efforts align with this evolving guidance from the CDC and the VDH, as well as with new guidance we have just received from the Virginia Department of Education. Uh, then depending on the time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson. He is, as we speak in his office, participating in an online conference, uh, he is a presenter in an online conference until 4:15. If he is not in the room at that time, Dr. Smith is in the room and is, uh, capable of filling in for Dr. Robertson during the presentation. And then I'm sure by the time we get to Q and A, uh, Dr. Robertson will be in the room. So either Dr. Robertson or Dr. Smith are going to update you on our progress with staffing and scheduling for the virtual learning center, before then sharing the administration's preliminary thoughts with you on how and when to return additional students for in-person instruction whose parents selected option one. And then the final presenter for today's workshop will be Natalie Allen, our Chief Officer for Communications and Community Engagement, who will conclude the presentation with a preview of a new COVID-19 dashboard before we then turn to you to answer your questions. So just as a reminder to our viewing public, this is a screenshot taken directly off of our website. We update daily the health metrics for the eastern region on the landing page of the division website, taking information directly from the website maintained by the Virginia Department of Health. As indicated on this slide, as of today, the health metrics for the eastern region are 4.3% for percent positivity, which, as the color designates, is in the green zone, and 151.3 new cases per day on a seven-day rolling average, which falls in the mid-range for yellow. This is a familiar looking screenshot to you from the VDH website. This was taken this morning and shows the historical data for percent positivity. As indicated on the graph, we've continued to make progress in the eastern region with the key indicator of community transmission, uh, with percent positivity. While the seven-day rolling average was at or above 10% throughout the months of July and August, percent positivity has steadily declined throughout September and into October, with rates of 7% on September 9 and 5.6% at the time of the last board meeting on September 22. And the rate as of today has now dropped below the 5% threshold and stands at 4.3%. This is a summary of the seven-day rolling average of new cases of COVID-19 in the eastern region on a daily basis. Since reaching the peak in July, the number of new cases has dramatically declined throughout the month of August. However, since early September and continuing now into October, this particular data point, number of new cases has plateaued. After the past, over the past three board meetings, the seven-day rolling average for a number of new cases has been 166 on September 9, 171.6 on September 22, and currently stands at 151.3. Since the middle of the summer, the Virginia Department of Health has been publishing a pandemic metrics dashboard to report various data sources related to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak in Virginia. Access to the VDH website has been restricted to only the regional health directors. However, effective last week, this particular VDH website is now accessible to the public. And VDH has updated their model to incorporate recently published guidance from the CDC on indicators for dynamic school decision-making. As indicated on the key on the left-hand side of the screen, the color scheme for transmission levels used by the CDC and the VDH in their model includes two levels of green to indicate no or low transmission, which are labeled as lowest and lower risk. Yellow indicates moderate transmission and moderate risk. Orange signifies higher transmission and risk. And burgundy or red signifies the highest risk with substantial transmission. As indicated on the map on the screen, Virginia Beach is currently in the CDC and VDH orange zone, which indicates a higher risk of transmission. This slide displays across the top, the health metrics that I just reviewed for you as recommended by the CDC and the VDH. And the table across the bottom of the screen indicates the health metrics that are part of the VBCPS adopted plan. So when we compare the two tables, first and most significantly, you'll notice that both use the same two core indicators, namely the number of new cases per 100,000 individuals and the percent positivity of tests administered over seven-day rolling average. The greatest difference, as I previously shared, is that the CDC and the VDH use a five-color scheme compared to the three colors we use in our plan. However, note how the ranges for the number of new cases and percent positivity are very similar. For instance, for number of new cases per 100,000 persons, the VDH and the CDC in the top table in the two green zones use less than five or five to less than 20 in comparison with our green threshold, which is less than 26.5 individuals. Also notice that the red zone for the CDC and the VDH is greater than 200 cases in comparison with our threshold of 265. For percent positivity, the ranges for the different colors are nearly identical, with green defined as less than 5% and red as more than 10%. In addition to the two core indicators of disease transmission, the CDC and the VDH guidelines include a third core indicator, namely a school division's self-assessed measure of their ability to implement five key health and safety mitigation strategies. You'll notice that the five strategies, which are listed along the left-hand side of this graphic, are all important components of our own reopening plan and include the consistent and correct use of masks, physical distancing to the largest extent possible, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, and contact tracing in collaboration with the local health department. This graphic illustrates the importance of these health and safety mitigation strategies in combination with one another. In other words, it's not cloth mass or physical distancing, it's cloth mass and social distancing, along with daily cleaning and disinfecting of surfaces and regular hand washing, that in combination with one another, these four health and safety mitigation strategies will reduce the likelihood of spread of COVID-19 as well as any other airborne virus. In addition to the VDH updating their information online, the Virginia Department of Education, or the VDOE, has also recently updated its guidance for schools to align with these health metrics and the health and safety mitigation strategies just published by the CDC. So as you read the graphic up on the screen from right to left, when the health metrics are in red or a combination of red and yellow, which is considered to be highest risk of transmission, the VDOE advises that school divisions should adhere to the Phase One recommendations of the VDOE reopening plan. And accordingly, in-person instruction should be limited to students with disabilities, when and as deemed appropriate by their parents and IEP teams. And all other students should be served remotely. In the middle of the graphic, when the health metrics are yellow or some combination of yellow and green, which indicates moderate to higher risk, the Phase Two recommendations of the VDOE reopening plan should be considered, which include in-person instruction for pre-K through grade three, in addition to students with disabilities and English language learners at all grade levels. Now, our local plan, of course, expands on this list to also include the upper elementary students in grades four and five, as well as students in grade six and nine. And then lastly, to the far left of this graph, only when the health metrics are in green or a combination of green and yellow, which indicates lower to lowest risk of transmission, should all students whose parents have expressed a preference for in-person instruction be given that opportunity. I would like you to note that the VDOE guidance for that green zone to the far left of that previous graphic specifies that hybrid schedules for in-person instruction may be necessary due to facilities and staffing limitations as a result of health and safety mitigations. So I will now turn the presentation over to my friends from the Department of School Leadership to share an update on the return of students for in-person instruction. This update will include, uh, VLC scheduling and staffing, as well as to discuss options for returning additional students for in-person instruction in grades seven, eight, 10, 11, and 12. Dr. Smith?
Welcome, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Bergen, and good evening. As you're aware, we have welcomed approximately 25 students back into our buildings over the past four weeks. I am pleased to say the phased approach to bringing students back has been a big win for our school staffs. In fact, elementary principals have asked if we would consider a similar approach in the future. Tonight, I am joined by Ms. Sharon Lewis, Senior Executive Director of Elementary School, and Mr. Joe Burnsworth, Acting Director of the Secondary Virtual Learning Center. They are here this evening to share an update with you on where we are with each group of students and staff. I will now turn it over to Mrs. Lewis.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Smith. And I think Dr. Smith meant 25,000 instead of 25, so we've welcomed 25,000 students back. That's okay. Okay, well, I hate this thing. Good afternoon. And as you know, elementary schools provided an alternative solution to the central VLC by absorbing as many of their own students and by partnering with other schools to accommodate all students. This allowed us to keep all students, families, and staff connected to their home school, which is so vitally important to our younger learners. We have, as of today, approximately 673 students concurrently enrolled or served in other schools. To ensure students, parents, and staff have the support they need, I have enlisted the support from one of our retired principals to assist us. Together with my two elementary directors, Dr. Linda Hayes and Dr. Sterling White, we will provide whatever is needed to help our elementary students and staff be successful. Many thanks to our principals and their staff, their devoted work to adapt to school life in a pandemic, to support our students, and to keep going has been remarkable. Our school administrators have had to reimagine school, both operationally and instructionally. This reimagining includes such things as parent drop-off and pickup, breakfast and lunch schedules, along with creating spaces for students to eat breakfast and lunch while practicing six-foot physical distancing, creating non-traditional classroom spaces, and reimagining small group instruction, both virtually and face-to-face. Elementary principals are virtually running two schools, a face-to-face school and a virtual school. This is new and exciting, but can also be challenging and overwhelming at times. As stated previously, elementary schools do not have a central virtual learning center. We were able to either absorb all virtual students at their home school or assign to another school. As previously stated, elementary principals are essentially running two schools. So to leverage support for the virtual school and staff, we have hired a retired principal, Barbara Sessons, as our virtual learning liaison. The virtual learning liaison's role is to provide support to administrators and students and teachers in option two. One of our goals is to ensure that students stay connected to their home school. For example, making sure families receive the alerts, newsletters, and various communications from the home schools. In addition, the virtual learning liaison will be able to support school administrators with being responsive to the community. The liaison will also support other administrative tasks that are greater this year as students are assigned to other schools as virtual students. For example, tracking attendance is a little different this year. And we want to make sure students are in regular attendance. Therefore, the virtual learning liaison will assist schools in tracking attendance, reading activity reports from class link, and contacting parents if attendance becomes an issue. The goal is to make sure every child is involved in learning daily and helping resolve any disconnection issues and to get support that families need. In addition to some of our students with, uh, disabilities, some of our 504 students and students of English language learners, we were not able to keep all of those students at our home school for instruction. However, sped 504 and ELL meetings will continue to be held at the home school. The virtual learning liaison will be able to serve as an administrative support and assist with the coordination of these meetings as needed to ensure no students fall through the cracks and that we remain in compliance. Teaching in the virtual world is different for many of our teachers and many of them need support with the how to teach virtually. Therefore, our school instructional coaches play a key role in the success of virtual instruction. The virtual learning liaison will also support virtual teachers by connecting them to their instructional coaches to ensure they receive support in co-planning, co-teaching, and co-assessing in a virtual environment and to ensure students receive a balance of non-digital learning experiences in addition to the virtual instruction. We are indeed excited about the opportunity to be able to use Mrs. Sessom in this manner to support our teachers. Yes, she has her work cut out for her, but she is up to the challenge. Thank you, and I would now like to turn the next portion of the presentation over to Mr. Burnsworth.
Welcome.
Good evening. It's good to be back with you. On the slide, you can see our basic data. But I'd like to tell you, first of all, that this has been one of the most interesting, but truly one of the most exciting things I have done as a part of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. To start a school in the throes of a school year has been challenging, but it has also tested our creative juices, our creativity, and quite frankly, our organizational skills. I have the pleasure of working with an outstanding team. I was given Joel Goldenshue, who works at Bayside 78, as an assistant. I was given Joel Goldenshue, who works at Bayside 7-8 as an assistant principal through much of the year, to work as my assistant, and he has been truly invaluable. Since we don't have a brick-and-mortar school, we have relied upon the services of the data tech from Salem Middle School and Talwood High School to help us with enrollment and all of those synergy questions that come up any time that you start a new schedule. In addition, we have the assistance of an ITS from Virginia Beach Middle School and a office associate from Independence Middle School who has moved with us to our location at Virginia Beach Middle School when we're actually meeting together as a team. Yesterday, we had our first staff meeting. We got the majority of our teachers Thursday. On Wednesday, most of them had been teaching something other than what they started teaching Thursday. But I have to tell you, they have adapted, they have hit the ground running, they are enthusiastic, and they have nothing but wonderful things to say about their students and the role they have taken on. Prior to our first day of classes on Thursday, all parents received a newsletter from me introducing the administrative team, our slight shifts in the master schedule so that we could accommodate the schedules of all of our students. Our goal was that we didn't change, or made as few changes as possible, to the students' day the way it was on Wednesday. We didn't want it to be significantly different on Thursday. In some cases, there was a slight change. For example, if we needed two classes of advanced English during the first block, but we only had one teacher for that, we added a zero bell. But we did that by clumping schools together so that all the students from one school went to the zero bell together, rather than separating them among a variety of bells. And the schools did a great job of helping us communicate that to the parents and the students. The teachers also contacted all the parents in advance of that first day and provided the time slots for each of the classes that the students would be coming to us. And then they also made sure that those timeframes were posted in Schoology so that when students went to the class, they were able to make sure they were in the right place. We have scheduled an open house for all of our parents next Wednesday night. It will be from 7 until, from 6:30 to 8:00 next Wednesday evening. It'll be by Zoom, and we are, we'll be sending an announcement of that to all of our parents tomorrow. And we have been working very closely with, I think, every department in the school division for professional development for our teachers new to the school division, with the Department of Technology for work in Schoology and synergy, with Media and Communications. And we're very excited that we're working with the graphic design program at the Advanced Technology Center to have a school logo created that we will, we'll have several and we'll send it out to our students and allow them to vote on the logo that they feel best aligns with the mission and the focus of the virtual, Secondary Virtual Learning Center. But before I sit down, I wanted to share with you just a couple quotes from teachers that I received yesterday. The one, over and over again, I heard from the teachers that these students establish relationships so quickly, not with just each other, but with them teachers. And we spent the first two days of classes doing just that, focusing on developing that classroom community, just as they would in a face-to-face environment. Two of our teachers said they were incredibly impressed with the students' level of self-advocacy, and in many cases, it was stronger in the virtual environment than it was in the face-to-face environment. They also talked about how flexible the students were and that they wouldn't allow the teachers to panic when something happened with the technology, or when a link didn't work, that they gave the teacher grace, allowing the teacher to give the students grace. But my favorite quote was about how generously the students had opened their hearts to this new learning environment, that they knew it was a change, new teachers, new time schedule, but that was all okay because they knew the staff was there for them to meet their needs in this unusual circumstance that we find ourselves in. Again, I appreciate the opportunity. I really enjoyed it, and someday, I will figure out the definition of the word retire.
So, thank you, Ms. Lewis and Mr. Burnsworth. I'd also like to thank the board. You guys have heard a lot about this Virtual Learning Center for probably two months, and honestly, you've given me a lot of grace and patience because I kept coming to you saying, "It's coming, it's coming." Well, it's here, and I would tell you, I'm really proud of the work. I'm so proud of the work that today in our Virtual Learning Center leadership meeting, I said, "You know what? We need to, we need to make this a book. We need to collect these stories we're hearing from the teachers, the students, the families, and we need to make this a book." Because there are, there are applications for things we're doing now for when we come back to some sense of normalcy. This could be something that we consider continuing down the road. And to do that, who better to tell the story than the teachers and the students? So, stay tuned, more to come. But at this time, I, I'd like to turn our attention to potential next steps as the school board considers allowing other option-one students to return to face-to-face instruction. And on this slide, you see three scenarios for your consideration and discussion. Over the next few slides, we'll share more information to help you generate some questions. We imagine that scenario A, not returning additional students, is not something the board or the community would support, so we'll focus on two options for returning additional students for in-person instruction. Scenario B notes bringing back one additional grade level at the middle school, such as grade eight, for it as example, and one additional grade level at high school, such as maybe seniors. Option C would be to bring back all of the remaining option-one middle and high school students. However, in doing so, we would need to consider using a hybrid approach due to the large number of students whose parents chose option one. And this slide, which was previously shared with the board at the August 25th meeting, contains a summary of the student registration verification process by level, with elementary schools on the left, middle schools down the center columns, and high schools to the right. The green rows are the top six schools by percentage for option one, in-person instruction, and the blue rows are the bottom six schools by percentage for option one. And note the variance for the middle schools, with the top three schools in a range of 70% to 75%, and the variance for the top three high schools in a range from 65% to 79%. And these percentages translate into student populations of 800 to 1,000 students in the top three middle schools and 1,200 to 1,500 students in the top three high schools. And the reason that's significant is because whatever plan we choose, we seek consistency. And so, we need to consider the larger schools as kind of our litmus point. Of course, you've seen this picture on the right. It might be the one that was shown in Georgia, or it could be a typical high school day pre-COVID. And so, it's going to be a challenge to, to, to bring kids back if we're not strategic. And some of those challenges are, of course, larger numbers and the building at the time, maybe on buses, in the hallways, cafeteria, et cetera. As such, we have to plan for a smaller population of the population to return to ensure we can meet the safety protocols and mitigation strategies that are in place. Now, once those things go away, we can't wait to welcome everybody back. Some of the challenges here are class changes between bells, more students transitioning in the hallways, we have larger numbers eating breakfast and lunch, transportation concerns, simultaneous instruction with teachers teaching both face-to-face and virtual at the same time. We imagine staffing and mitigation challenges should be expected and will need to be addressed through planning. And at this time, I want to turn the presentation over to Dr. Smith, who's going to share more information about the scenarios for middle school and high school for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. And now that we welcome 25,000 students back to class, we're looking at adding more. Based on the challenges shared by Dr. Robertson, we have discussed possible scenarios to bringing back additional students as safely as possible. The first scenario is scenario B, which is the addition of one grade level at the middle school and one grade level at the high school. This would mean, in addition to grade six, we would return grade seven or eight at the middle school level. In addition to grade nine, we would return grade 10, 11, or 12 at the high school level. Mondays will remain asynchronous instructional days for students. Tuesday through Friday will be face-to-face and virtual instruction. Two grade levels will be in the building at any one time, and this scenario only pertains to option-one students. This scenario would eliminate other ops, grade levels, from attending face-to-face instruction at the secondary level, as this would expand student numbers beyond what the school can safely operate. Scenario C will provide an opportunity for all grade levels to return to face-to-face instruction. In scenario C, grade six option-one students will continue to report daily, Tuesday through Friday. The scenario is for middle school only, and will bring back seventh and eighth grade option-one students on a weekly or two-day rotation. On a weekly rotation, the first week, grade seven students will attend classes face-to-face, while grade eight students will attend classes virtually. The following week, grade eight students will attend classes face-to-face, while grade seven students will attend classes virtually. The same can be done on a two-day rotation. Grade seven will attend classes face-to-face on Tuesday and Wednesday, while grade eight can attend classes virtually. And then grade eight will attend classes face-to-face Thursday and Friday, while grade seven attends classes virtually. Again, Monday will remain an asynchronous instructional day for students. Tuesday and Friday will be face-to-face and virtual instruction. Two grade levels will be in the building at any one time, and this scenario, again, only applies to option-one students. The scenario is a little different for high school. For scenario C for high school, it would provide opportunity for all grade levels to return to face-to-face instruction based on an alphabet with approximately half of option-one students in the building on any given day. On a weekly rotation, the first week, students in grades nine through 12 with the last name of A through K will attend classes face-to-face, while students in grade nine through 12 with the last name of L through Z will attend classes virtually. The following week, students in grades nine through 12 with the last name of L through Z would attend classes face-to-face, while students in grades nine through 12 with the last name of A through K will attend classes virtually. The same, again, can be done on a two-day rotation. Example would be grade nine through 12 with the last name of A through K would attend classes face-to-face Tuesday and Wednesday, while students in grade nine through 12 with the last name of L through Z will attend classes virtually. They would then flip the other two days, meaning that students in grades nine through 12 with the last name of L through Z would attend classes face-to-face Tuesday and Wednesday, and while students in grades nine through 12 with the last name of A through K will attend classes virtually. Mondays, again, will remain an asynchronous instructional day for students. Tuesday and Friday will be a face-to-face and virtual instruction, and this scenario, again, only applies to students who are in option one. Lastly, in this scenario, it will be necessary that we have grade nine split time between face and face and instructional instruction once we return more students. So you see the timeline for returning more students. September 22nd, we select, we had select students with disabilities report. September 29th, we have pre-K through second-grade students report. October 6th, we had third grade through fifth grade students report, and October 8th is where we got that 25,000 students altogether reporting to school. And the plan would be to look toward November 12th to add additional students. And the reason for looking at November 12th would be that it would be a beginning of a new grading period. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Allen, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer.
Welcome back with us.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Arry, Vice Chair Melanick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. In order to provide transparency to our community regarding cases of COVID-19 in the VD schools community, we have created a dashboard that provides the date, location, and number of cases at each location. This slide shows the proposed layout. I know it's a little small. As you can see, there is a short explanation of the dashboard itself. It offers language regarding what happens when we're made aware of a positive case. A sample notification letter is there, and a copy of the self-screen are, they're all available on the left-hand tab, and I apologize for how small it is there. Just as an FYI, we did send the proposed dashboard information to the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health for input, and that input is incorporated here. And it's important to note that the total number of cases does not equal the number of individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19. Cases may include a single individual who was in multiple locations. For example, if we had an individual who tested positive for COVID-19 and was in three different schools, each location would show up as a case on the dashboard, just to clarify that for you. And I know that's short and sweet, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the dashboard.
Well, first, maybe, are we, let me see from, does that take us to the end of the...
Yes, that's the end of that presentation, so we're ready to answer questions about any and all of it.
Oh, anything.
Since you're, you're up here, well, if, does anybody have a question specifically for Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen's? Okay.
Thank you. Actually, I have two. One, you were mentioning that the total number of cases doesn't necessarily mean the total number of individuals because of the maybe possible exposures at more than one location.
Exactly.
And so, if, I'm going to say Allington because it's in front of me, not because it's an Allington issue, but if Allington had three positive cases on that date, would it still just show one? Because we're showing the school?
No.
I mean, we're showing the location, or it would show...
No, it would, if there were multiple cases within one school, you would see three.
Okay. And then my other question is in regards to possibly adding an additional column to the dashboard that would indicate the dates of when the individual was at a location. So, if Allington had the one case, and we knew that that person, whoever that person is, was only in the school for one day, if that column could indicate that date, or if it's two days, to help give people a better sense of if they may or may not have even been at the school that day.
Gotcha. We can definitely take that under advisement. I can talk to Health Services and see if we can add that.
And I think, I mean, just to add to that, I mean, I think it would be important to note for the community, again, that if they were exposed, and if there was a risk of exposure, that that would come through contact...
that that would come through contact tracing, and they would be notified about that at the school level regardless. So they, they would know. But, you know, I think we can certainly talk about adding a column about when that potential positive exposure may have occurred, because this is the notification date that's currently in the, in the, in the column.
Right.
Okay, Mrs. Melanick.
Mr. Burnsworth, you always have a way of making lemonade, really. Thank you for, for all of that. Thanks for being so positive. But for anybody, if we went with this hybrid, seventh, eighth, 10, 11, 12, our teachers will be teaching face-to-face, virtually, and perhaps both simultaneously. Is that correct? Is that how that'll?
So whether we bring back any additional students, it would not change what teachers are doing right now with the existing grades. So if I am a English 11 teacher right now, there's no students in the building. So all I'm doing is teaching virtually. However, on my class load, I have some kids that are virtual and some kids that are face-to-face. So when we pivot to any new grade level coming back, that 11th grade teacher now would have to provide instruction to students face-to-face or students virtual at the same time, which is what our ninth-grade teachers are doing and our sixth-grade teachers are doing.
Okay.
And they would receive a stipend.
They would?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted, okay.
Yes.
I just?
Any teacher placed in that situation is on the stipend list. They just, the stipend doesn't start until they're in that scenario.
Okay, that was my next question. Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, please add Ms. Weems to the queue.
Will do. Mrs. Felton.
Thank you for this detail, Ms. Allen, especially on the dashboard that you mentioned. And I think Dr. Smith alluded to what I want to know when it comes to individuals being detected as positive. And when they are essential workers and they're in the school, and they find that someone has been tested positive. And I got, when I got the announcement, let's go back, when I got the announcement about Tallwood, immediately, my email blew up, my phone blew up. So the current concerns are, if the person is in the building and has been tested positive the same day that other people were, what are the protocols, what are the confidentiality about naming a person, are those people being named?
They are not.
So how are we supporting those that are in the building? What, do we have conversation with them? Do we support them and tell them to go get tested? How are we doing this? Because from the conversation I've been hearing, having from teachers, counselors, bus drivers, that they don't feel that they're getting that support in the directions of what to do and where to go. They feel that they're being left out of the whole loop, and when do they sign up? And I know, you know, a couple of things were mentioned. And I just had to mention the words that Ms. Lewis mentioned and the Burnsworth mentioned. It's challenging. It's a lot of things that happen at one time, can't even find my wording. Challenging, overwhelming, and we are adapting. And those are the words that are being constantly said, not just by you all, but by the teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers. So I just need to know, they need to hear the protocol, the support that they, I need to know too, because right now, at this point, they don't feel supported or being heard about getting an announcement that someone's been positive in my building, so what, what else?
Okay, I understand. As far as, if they were at a high risk of transmission, they are individually contacted though by either Health Services or the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health. So if there was a risk of exposure to them, they do get contacted with a phone call. Related to being in the building at the same time with somebody, that's when they get a notification letter that has protocols in it, and there's a sample of that notification letter on the dashboard. And I, of course, can send it to you as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We good right now, Mrs. Felton?
Yes, I'd like to ask one more question concerning the virtual open house Ms. Burnsworth was talking about, and good idea, love it. But was that extended to any other grades, like maybe the sixth grade? Because I know some of the students that were on virtual the first couple of weeks of school found out that they, when they're transitioning over, that the Option Two student wouldn't have the same teacher. Some parents found that out. So was that implemented for, for instance, the sixth grader to have virtual, a virtual open house as well?
The virtual open house will be for sixth and ninth graders. And we are, we're, we're in discussion right now because we shifted HPE to the online version, like we do in summer school, so that it gives the students more flexibility. Where we were talking on my way over here about having a public forum-type situation for our high schoolers who are in online PE, just to go through all the protocols that align with that program as well. So we keep adding more communication opportunities as we go along and as things arise.
So both Option One and Option Two are just Option Two students?
Those are just the VLC students that we have.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs, and then Mrs. Holtz.
This is for Ms. Allen. I was, and I think Sharon, and Mrs. Felton asked it partly, but this, this is my concern, that I keep getting emails, you know, from teachers and employees. And it's, they find out that someone has been exposed, and that they, you know, maybe in their class. But, for instance, if it happened like on a Friday, and they're in a holding position, they don't know anything about it, except for, by the way, somebody has tested. How long, I mean, when they're, when they are on pins and needles, I'm not sure. What are they waiting for? Are they waiting for Ms. Shaw, Mary Shaw, to verify? What's, what's that protocol? What is, give, please give me the?
Absolutely. It is a positive test result that we have to wait for, but I'll?
And how long does that take?
So normally, the Virginia Department of Health, in working with their contact tracing and their testing, takes four to eight hours for them to go through their contact tracing to determine who is at most risk and who is not at risk, who's a low risk versus a high risk. Because that triggers different communications, as Ms. Allen talked about a moment ago. So four to eight hours.
Four to eight or forty-eight?
Four to eight.
Okay, because this person heard on a Friday and did not hear anything back until Monday.
So that could, that could have been, because if someone tested on a Friday and their results were not back until Monday, that has nothing to do with our ability. Contact tracing cannot begin until a positive test result is back. Once the positive test result is back, then they start the tracing. So for example, let's say hypothetically, you were in a school on Monday, and you found out on Thursday that someone else was in the school on Monday that had tested positive. Well, you would be alarmed unless you found out that that person who was in the building on Monday got tested Monday night and had not been back in the building since Monday. It just took two days for the results to come back and the contact tracing. You weren't at risk of being additionally exposed on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday because that person didn't go back in the building. If there's any situation where that person would have been in the building for multiple days, then anybody in that building on those days when that person was within the window of, what's the term they're using?
That transmission?
Transmission, yes, thank you. Communications. In the transmission window, then you would be notified.
Okay, all right. Thanks for explaining that.
I mean, it is tough, because sometimes tests take a couple of days to get back. You know, we have immediate tests that come back within hours that are just preliminary, and then there are the, the, the more accurate tests that take sometimes a couple of days.
Okay, so that, that explains it too. I think they need to hear both that as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else right now, Mrs. Riggs? Okay, so Mrs. Holtz, then Mr. Edwards.
All right, thank you. I wanted to ask about the hybrid schedule. You talked about November 12th, possibility of bringing students back. And I know you chose that because you said it was the beginning of the new grading period. But is there, that's a whole month away. Is there any other reason that you couldn't bring them back, the kids, back next week? I mean, I was wondering, is there a personnel problem? Do you have personal, you know, the protective gear for teachers that might not be ready? Why can't we bring them back next week? That's my question.
So, to, whatever plan we choose to bring back kids is going to require some time for transportation to work out the pieces, to get the bus schedule. Who, who needs transportation with the additional students who are coming back? If the model is the two days on, two days off, or one week on, one week off, the PPE supplies that we have continue to come in, so we're not short any PPE supplies. But there are, there is a timeframe for operations to be able to bring back students. And then we, in consideration of that, we just felt like it would make most sense if we waited until the grading period.
Well, I think as a lay on to that, Mrs. Holtz, in addition to the operational piece, the, this is the first you all are hearing of this. We wanted to have some discussion with you tonight about this, give you some time to wrap your head around this, and then perhaps hear from your, the community in terms of their thinking about this. And of course, then the next time we would be together to talk about that in more detail would be at the next board meeting, and so that's two weeks away. And then by the time you sort of wrap your head around that, and then the operational components, it made sense to us to be thinking about the, the marking period changeover.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good right now, Mrs. Holtz? Anything else right now? Mrs. Holtz, anything else right now? Okay, Mr. Edwards.
The, the options thing was at the top of my list as well. And I think Dr. Spence just answered most of that in terms of, let me clarify. We're, we're looking at basically receiving feedback. Are we looking at any organized survey process or just the board hearing from our constituents? In the next two weeks, our process for assessing the options. And, and as, as we sit here today, is there a recommended option from the administration? Or are you, or are we waiting to, for some feedback?
So we, I can give you our recommendation tonight. We thought we would first engage with you in a discussion about what, what we can do and what we can't do. And then I could tell you what our recommendation is, if that's what you would like. And then we hadn't considered a survey. We certainly can. The survey would come down to essentially bring back one more grade level or bring back everybody on a hybrid versus anything else. Because beyond what we present there, we don't think we can accomplish with the physical distancing requirements anything beyond what we've shared with you. The, the third option we could put out as a survey would be then also leave everybody else home as they are now. So leave it as is until such time as it's safe to come back with no physical distancing requirements. Based on conversations we've had to this point, we didn't think that that was likely the scenario that would garner the most support, that there might be something, the, the in-between, which would be, be bringing those students back, would do so in a way that would allow us to continue to physically distance. So we certainly could put out a survey to say, bring back one grade level or bring back everybody. But I, I'll be honest with you, it's my sense that we already know from what we've heard that it isn't going to be bring back one grade level. So I'm not sure our survey is valuable in terms of our time. I think it's probably more worth our time to discuss the hybrid options. And then in that scenario, there's two. And as you heard discussed, the two really are either bring back kind of all the grade levels two days a week, or bring back one grade level one week and one grade level another week, that's middle school. And then for, for high school, alphabetically, like half the kids, one week, one, one week on, one week off, or bring them all back on two-day alternating. My belief is that rather than survey, we need to go and get staff input on that, because that's an instructional issue more so than like a preference of, of, of our parents. Although I will, I do want to acknowledge when I say that, that sounds a little callous, because I know that that also creates issues for parents. One thing that's, that's a little bit better about this scenario we're talking about is we're talking about secondary kids. We've, we've sorted and dealt with the elementary students who are the most challenging when it comes to childcare. For the most part, we're talking about secondary, in fact, we're entirely talking about secondary kids. And you noted, probably noted in the recommendation that we keep sixth graders on board. That came in part from some conversations with some of the health folks that we've been working with, and then also considering the childcare needs. That sixth grade is kind of that threshold age where childcare still is a bit of an issue, but beyond that, it's less of an issue. In fact, you'll remember the school board even removed childcare as an out-of-zone option for middle school parents, because we had that conversation about childcare becomes less of an issue for middle school students. So overall, what I guess I'm trying to say is, it, it sort of comes down to, we either leave it as is, or we go to the hybrid model, I think, personally. Although that's, this is a discussion for you all, but you asked about a recommendation. I think we either leave it as is or go to the hybrid model. We would recommend the hybrid model. I would like some time to get staff input. We have a teacher assembly meeting coming up. Our principals have meetings with their ILTs scheduled around this, or they've been talking about that, to get some staff input. And just sort of figure out which of those two, week on, week off, or alternating days makes the most sense instructionally and pragmatically for us. And then come back in a couple of weeks with you all and have that conversation again, and let you know what we found out, and then, you know, what you've heard. And then I'm certain we'll have opportunity to hear from the community at that meeting as well. But that just, that's why we brought it forward this way at this meeting, because we, we, we knew this was going to be the first time you were going to hear this, and you just needed, you're going to need some time to wrap your head around it. And we need to come back after some staff conversation and tell you what we think is the best hybrid model. But also frankly, we, we wanted to put the hybrid model on the table with you first before we went back and had that conversation, so that there was no surprises here. And, and so we can go and have that dialogue. I, I will answer, because I, I think it's going to come up, and I want to go ahead and answer it. You know, we, when we came to you at the outset, we said we've talked to our health advisory folks, and basically they universally rejected the hybrid model. So I did go back and reach out. I didn't have time to pull the whole panel together, but I did reach out to a group of, of, of those health folks who, who worked with us, primarily the ones that you've heard from a few times in our board meetings, and said, okay, so how bad is this? And of course, they said, well, it wouldn't be our first, you know, to go against their kind of initial advice of hybrid won't work because you're putting kids in other settings. And, and they said, well, you know, our, our preference would, would not be a hybrid model. We get the space logistics, and we, we would certainly not recommend you overriding the physical distancing limitation. So we would certainly not recommend that in lieu of bringing everybody, all, everybody back. And if your option is to bring back students on a hybrid, to get them back, then we would support that. And certainly more so at the secondary level, because there's the, less of the childcare issue. You know, the students aren't necessarily going to be as often with other students when they're not with us. So just to give you a little bit of a sense of where they were. So does that give you the, the clarification, you know, where we are now?
That's exactly what I had hoped for. I was not recommending a survey, but I was just trying to figure out what was going to happen between now and then, the, the next meeting. And I, I think clearly, the, the, the staff analysis and input to us is, is, is critical in, in terms of how it can best work to serve the students, so.
Yeah, so we, we will, before we get together again, we will have had a number of conversations. So I would anticipate we'll leverage the teacher forum, teacher assembly, we'll reach out to the VBEA, and we'll also ask our principals to meet with their ILTs to get some feedback on that. And we can bring, kind of collate that and get that together for you before our next meeting.
Okay. Two other quick things on the challenges that we faced. The, the, the one slide that had the challenges, is there any kind of rank order to which are the biggest issues and which are just sort of up there because they are, they might be? Yeah, what, again, I, I get a lot of questions on, on this, like, you know, what is the, you know, critical path in the chart there?
I'm not sure if I would rate. I'm not sure if I would rate one necessarily outside, like, like, like an outlier. Like, boy, this is the one that we got to get right. I think they all present unique challenges that are all solvable with proper planning.
From a social distance issue, are we more worried about transportation or inside the schoolhouse?
So I don't know if Mr. Pace wants to talk about the, the potential uptick in number of students riding a bus, and how that might play in.
I mean, I, I know we've got driver issues and stuff, so we're talking about being able to do this on November 12th, and so.
Yeah, the health mitigations that we got in place now, you know, because all the drivers have their personal protective equipment, and students are wearing masks on the middle and, and high school buses with sixth and ninth grade students, they're certainly one to a seat, many of those buses are even less than one to a seat. Of the 25,000 students that they said we had coming back into the building, we're transporting about 15,000 of those. So, that, that's where our challenges come in. Because of the seating capacity restrictions that we may have, yes, we may need to go up to two to a seat on some of those buses. That hasn't been a problem for elementary school health mitigation, because they got natural barriers right in front of them, and, you know, the, the mask, and siblings sitting together, and, and so forth. But any of the challenges we have in transportation is dependent on the ridership restrictions. You know, once we go back full time, we're able to provide all the services right now, because the academies are not running, and those drivers typically are full day academy drivers. So since they're not running, we're using them to fill in the spaces of the drivers that we've lost. So, it's a challenge, but we think we can cover it, we think we can make it work. The unknowns are, when they're known, will be even more positive.
Okay.
So.
Okay. The, my last question was just a, it's, it's more of a comment, piggybacking on both Ms. Owens and Ms. Felton's discussion on the tracking and processes. I get a lot of questions on that as, as well. And I don't know if there's a, a way to get that information out, so that people know exactly how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen. If it's already out there, it's not out there effectively. So I don't know whether it's another set of FAQs just on that, or.
So.
I, I, I don't know, some, some way to, to get that out, because there, there, there's a, a, a lot of concerns and, so.
I think, yeah, Mr. Edwards, I appreciate that. And I think a lot of it is generated because you hear there was, there was this, you know, incident at this school. And, and I think we, we all have to acknowledge that that's going to continue. So, like, and we've talked about that from the beginning, that when we go back to school, there's no way we could tell you, you're not going to have cases of positive testing in our schools. Because, as we always say, schools are a microcosm of our community. We have positive testing in our community, therefore, there's going to be positive testing in our schools. So far, the overwhelming percentages of those have not occurred because of in, in-school interaction. It's been folks who've kind of had it out of school, like a lot of virtual students, for example. But that said, we understand, so like, people just don't know. If, if they've been directly impacted by it, they know, because they've gotten that communication from the Department of Health, or they've gotten that letter that goes home from the school that says there was a, there was an incident here, because the VDH determined that a letter needed to go home. To answer your question more broadly about communication, so we will continue, and we have over and over again referred to those FAQs that explain contact tracing, and explain who gets notified. And we will continue to do that also, and importantly, on the dashboard, as Natalie was showing. And again, I'm apologizing that it was very small, but there is a direct link to the process, and a description of the process that the VDH approved. It's right above the dashboard, it says, this is what happens. And if you want more information about what happens, click on this, and it takes you back to the FAQs about how it works, so that people can see how, you know, go to the dashboard, see what's happening in terms of incidences in the school, and then also read more about what happens for contact tracing. So it'll be with the dashboard.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Edwards, if I can just go back to your question here. I got a note from my colleague back there, he said, you know, probably the biggest challenge, if you had to rank it, was additional kids, feeding additional kids in lunchroom, six feet apart, is, is something that schools are, are working on solutions for. They're achievable solutions, but it's, it's a, when your cafeteria can only sit 120, and you have 700 kids in the building, a little bit of a challenge there. So we're working through it.
Okay, Mrs. Weems, you're on.
Thank you. I, I like what I'm hearing about wanting to get more kids in the building, I appreciate that. I was going to ask, like Ms. Holtz, I wish that we could have done it sooner, and I'm kind of disappointed, but it seems like it's almost lingering a little bit longer, because we don't meet, you know, in five weeks, we've, we've met twice. So that's kind of disappointing. I, I would be all for school board, the school board meeting once a week, like we do in budget seasons. And I know I brought this up before, I just hate the community to be waiting, because you spent three weeks not meeting, now we're meeting tonight, and then we have to wait two more weeks. So, that's a little bit disappointing. But, but I do like the, the plan that I'm hearing. Also, is, has there been any discussion, or I know that several colleagues brought this up before, has there been any discussion to try to get the tech center, the ATC, Renaissance Academy students, the, you know, hands-on career and technical education out there on North Landing? Has, has there been any discussion about trying to get them back before a month, before November 12th? That's my first question.
Okay, Mrs. Weems, I'm going to ask, because we have had lots of conversations about how to get these kids back in.
Thank you, yes, I just want to say that, uh, working with, you know, DASL and, and Teaching and Learning, we've developed a whole range of possible plans to get both the tech center and the ATC students back, including option one and option two, because some of the option two kids require hands-on training as well. And some logistical challenges to that are, you know, those children aren't currently in school, so they're virtual learning during that midday transition time, because these are half-day programs. So, we're trying to work out the time differential on that, but I'm pretty confident, in fact, I'm very confident, that we'll be able to work out a plan to be able to incorporate all of those students back into hands-on instruction whenever it's necessary. We're also working along the same lines with the Governor's School and the new Barack Environmental Center Academy as well.
Okay, great, and if we could see that maybe before we meet again, we're going to meet every couple of weeks, I would like to see anything that, that, you know, indicates some sort of, you know, not detail, but skeleton plan, that would be great. Also, are there any plans to resume clubs, sports practices, internal clubs in, in the middle and high school, as well as external?
Yes, we run virtual clubs right now, but they, we, they, we just ask them to meet virtually. We do have a return to play committee that is run out of the Office of Student Leadership. They're working with the principals, trying to align their, their next steps with guidance from the Virginia Department of Health, CDC guidelines, the state's phase in terms of phased return, and in consideration of the Virginia High School League's upcoming athletic calendar, which is slated to start, I think, in mid to late December. So yes, clubs and activities occurring right now, virtually. We've even had some schools who've already had SCA elections.
Okay, great. Okay, and then, I guess this one, Dr. Bergen, I might have to call you back up here, because I, I didn't understand one of your slides. I think it was the second or third one, where you had the map of Virginia, and it was talking about high-risk transmission, and we were in the medium to high risk. Okay, well, there, yeah. So how can we be in the medium, high risk, when our numbers and our percentages are going down, and we're at 4.3%, our cases are going down? How, I, I don't really understand that, so can you clarify that, that for me?
Sure, so this slide, Mrs. Weems, is the comparison of the CDC and the VDH metrics with Virginia Beach. So at the top, you're at home, I'm assuming you can see this through your, through your Zoom screen. There are five colors.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, there are five colors to the VDH CDC color scheme. We're in orange, because we fall in the 50 to 200 cases per day. Whereas we fall in the green zone for percent positivity. So we're green for one, and we're orange for the other. So the model that VDH and CDC uses is going to default to the more concerning color, which is orange. Until we get below 50 cases per 100,000 on a seven-day rolling average, we won't get to yellow by the CDC or the VDH model, because their, their orange is 50 to 200. Does that address your question?
Yeah, well, I, I can't, I mean, I know all the numbers, it was just, it's just odd to me that we're at high risk when our, when our percentage is in green, but yet, when that, with that map, we're in the high-risk transmission, but our percentages are so low now, so.
We're, we're in, we're in A shade of green for one of the CDC-VDH metrics, and we're in orange for the other. I don't, what, what do you get when you, what do you get when you mix green and orange?
Brown.
Brown?
Yeah. Okay, um, okay, I think, I've, I've got a couple more questions, but they're not critical. I can email them in, so I'll let my colleagues take a turn, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll ask a question, and maybe with you here, Dr. Bergen, or, and first a comment, because I don't want to give the public to get the impression that some of this, these timelines are dictated by our board meeting frequency. You all have been otherwise occupied the past three weeks with getting 25,000 kids back to school. I mean, obviously, there's planning going on as well, but could, could you just elaborate a little bit to make, so that the pub, the public does understand that?
Half of those 25,000 didn't come back till last week. You know, the grades, three, four, five came back last Tuesday, grades six and nine have been in school for all of day. So, yeah, that, that's a fair statement, that there's been a lot of logistics and planning and support in bringing back our sixth and ninth graders up through last week. This guidance that we've been discussing through with you was just published within the last week by the CDC and the VDH. And we would love to get more students back sooner, when safe to do so. There, there, it's complex between option one and option two. Particularly, the, the middle school and the high school is far more complex than the elementary in terms of scheduling. We were talking about the students who go to the specialized programs. In an air quote "normal" year, they ride a bus from home to their base school, and then they ride a different bus from the base school to where the program is delivered. Like if you're a kid at the, at the technical center. So, it's just more complex. It's not as simple as just busing the kids one time, we're busing the kids several times to support some of these specialized programs in the high school.
And my, it's a question slash comment about the secondary scenarios. And I, I'm making, we're making, I'm making a presumption that I think is true, that at the high school level, a lot of these classes involve multi-grades of students, and that.
Yeah.
So that's why, because of course, the first thing I saw when I saw the alphabet breakdown, you know, they're going to, they're going to be with half their peers, never with all their peers, right? Like that, but I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, that like an algebra or an algebra II class can have any, probably sophomores, juniors, and seniors, is, is that?
It can have a mix of, absolutely, depending on the course, you could have ninth and 10th graders, or 10th and 11th graders, or 10th, 11th, and 12th graders in a particular CTE course. Yeah, as opposed to middle school, where primarily sixth graders are with sixth graders all day, seventh graders are with seventh graders all day, eighth graders are with eighth graders all day. It's different in high school. That's why we have different hybrid models for middle school versus high school.
Just wanted that stated, thank you. All right, so we're back to Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Melnick.
Please add Ms. Weems back to the queue.
Yeah, you're in there.
Um, I just wanted to say, first of all, I like that you are asking for staff input. I think that's very important, because of the instructional part. That's a, that's a big, big part of this. And so, for all those teachers, I'm sure, I'm sure you're going to have a formal way of asking for instructional, staff input from teachers. But for any teachers that are out there, please know that, you know, we've got emails that you can send to us, and you can do it that way as well. But, I mean, I think the best way is through the, through the way that, that you're going to be asking principals for input, and maybe they can ask their staff that, that way, that, that's the professional way to do it.
So we have that, plus, we do have a meeting of the teacher assembly between now and then, and our thought would be to get their input and ask them to bring input from their colleagues.
Oh, good, okay. And the other thing is, I wanted to say was that I'm also happy to hear that, that administration is working on getting, because I was going to ask about the ATC and the tech center and all that. I had a parent who asked me about, they, they were a Navy family, and they came here from overseas, and her son was really excited to get into the environmental center program. And, and part of that program, a lot of it depends on hands-on activities that they do outside. So, they were really concerned that, you know, this is part of it being virtual now. So, I'm, I'm anxious for those kids to have a chance. And then the third thing I want to emphasize is that I am mostly concerned right now, I'm real concerned about 12 and 13-year-old students, basically seventh and eighth graders. And, and so I'm anxious to hear about, you know, what, what our, our educators and what our parents want on these different scenarios. I think it's just interesting, you know, we need to know how, that, what they want, and which scenario they would prefer, I guess. But I'm just concerned, because seventh and eighth graders are pretty much 12 and 13-year-olds. And even though they're, they're of the age where we don't have to get a babysitter yet, at the same time, leaving them alone all day is not wise either. And so I, I heard from one particular seventh-grade parent, and this child is being left. She's, she's pretty responsible, but she's having a really difficult time virtually. Her grades are plummeted, and she's usually an A student, A, once in a while gets, gets a B, but right now, she's failing in several of her classes. And so, I'm real concerned about students of that age being left at home, you know, and her parents are having to take time and stay home and come and check on her during the middle of the day, which is what they should be doing, but at the same time, you know, they're kind of like that, they're not adults, and they're not babies, and, you know, they're, they're really kind of a vulnerable age. So, I'm concerned, and I'm anxious to get those seventh and eighth graders back into the buildings, at least part-time. So hopefully, we can do something to help them. And the other thing I just wanted to say was, you know, I'm not opposed to meeting again before two weeks, if, if that would help the situation, but I'm not sure your preparations would go any faster, just if we had a meeting, I just want parents to know that, you know, we're not opposed to coming back and having another, an extra meeting, if we need to.
Okay, Mrs. Melnick, then Ms. Owens.
Um, okay, will there be additional grade levels added to the VLC once this happens?
So at this point, there's, no, there are no plans to add more grades to the VLC. We've got our staff in place that are focused on grade six and grade nine, and those courses, particularly grade six, are grade six courses. And the grade nine courses, we have pre, we have an Algebra I lab, which could potentially have other kids besides ninth graders, or could have other kids besides ninth graders, but Health and PE nine has ninth graders. So if we want to do anything, any expansion on the VLC at secondary level, we'd need to find staff.
Oh, okay, all right, so I have one more question, but kudos to you guys for representing these high schools. Those masks are great, although that green one, the green run one is really nice. So it's beautiful. Okay, so let me just, right now, we have sixth graders who are not able to come back face-to-face, who indicated they wanted to come back face-to-face. So. Six, yes, then we'll talk after.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Riggs.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that I, uh, fully understood the new, um, guidance that's come down. We have them on the things, but it's really small. Could we go to the, the slide that had the, um, guidance for schools VDH, um, one?
Which one?
Uh, no, but it's three columns, it had like the lowest or lower risk, moderate, or, uh. Nope. That one, yes, okay, but print is super small underneath those categories, but I wanted to make sure I was understanding that according to this new guidance that was just released, that is with whatever, CDC and VDH, that if you're in the moderate or high-risk category, and we know we're in the higher risk, I, I saw it, it said pre-K to third grade was recommended, I couldn't see past that, if it was saying that they recommend more grades coming in. I know that we already have more grades than that, and so, I'm wondering, are we already above the state recommendation?
Yes.
And then discussing going further above that recommendation? And what it is about, um, our situation that makes us feel comfortable about going over the VDH CDC regulations?
Sure, so, first, let me break that down.
Okay.
Notice it's a, it's a montage of colors, there's a little bit of green, yellow, orange, and red all the way across, and that's by design. As I think Mrs. Weems was asking, how could we be in one color here and one color there? Because we're at different places, depending on which metric you're looking at. That's why there's a blend of colors on, in the background. From left to right, well, reading from right to left, when you're in all red, if you were to the very far right of the chart, the VDOE aligns with the CDC and the VDH, that they say no one should be in school in person, with the exception of possibly special education students, if that is the desire of their parents and their IEP teams. And we did that, as you might recall, during the summer and at the start of the school year, we did have our, our special needs students, who were self-contained students, who came back when we were in red metrics, because it's a relatively speaking, smaller number of students who really benefit very little from online instruction and need to be in-person with their, with their specialized instruction. So, that's to the far right. As you move your way towards from right to left, and the colors become less red and more orange and more yellow, the VDOE aligns with the CDC and the VDH, and that they recommend you bring in your youngest learners, your preschoolers, your kindergarten first and second grade, and all special education and ESOL learners. And we are perfectly aligned to that as well, as I mentioned when I went through these slides earlier. I'll keep talking. We do exceed, uh, Ms. Owens, that we also are bringing our fourth and fifth graders, and our sixth graders, and our ninth graders. Now, why do we feel that we can do that? Well, because particularly for sixth grade, it's the only grade level that we had coming back. We didn't, to date, as of last Thursday, not seventh or eighth graders. And ninth grade was the only grade level we had back, not 10th, 11th, or 12th graders, so we have more space. It's, uh, it's less stress on our transportation system, on our support staff that are supporting kids in school. We have more physical space to accommodate and to provide for physical distancing. So, we felt, we felt that we could safely accommodate more children in the metrics that we're in. Remember, our metrics are green and yellow. We are at, uh, about 150, give or take, on cases per day, per 100,000, and we're at below 5% on positivity.
Right.
So, to bring more students back, I think is what you were asking, what gives us confidence that we want to have this discussion, even though we're in what the VDOE and the VDC, and the CDC and the VDH would say, orange.
Right.
Some blend of green, yellow, and orange. We're not comfortable bringing all of the option-one students back in middle school and high school. As Dr. Robertson explained, it's a lot of kids in some of those schools, it's 1,000 kids in some middle schools, it's 1,500 bodies in a high school. With masks on, we can accommodate, not quite that many, but, but many of them, at three feet of, of physical distancing in classrooms during instruction. Mr. Edwards asked, you know, what gives us the greatest pause? I would concur with whoever it was that, that jumped in from the back, it's that at mealtime, you can't eat your meal with your mask on. And our local physicians were insistent, and we agree, that you have to have a minimum of six feet of physical distance when your mask is off and you're consuming food. So, 1,500 kids in a high school, it's an impossible task to try to feed them all, or 1,000 kids in a middle school. We don't have the space to do it, so that's why we're recommending a hybrid model at middle school and high school, is to reduce the number of bodies that are in the middle school at a given time to two grade levels, sixth and seventh on some days, and sixth and eighth on some days, but never sixth, seventh, and eighth.
Right, okay.
And at high schools, either ninth and one other grade level, basically half of the kids who want to come back, or half of the kids across all the grade levels on a hybrid, so all the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders on any given day, either rotating by week or rotating two days on, two days off.
Sure, and I, I get that part, what I don't fully understand is why, um, and maybe it's more of a VDH CDC-type question, why they wouldn't have recommended previously, like on this little thing, when they say pre-K through third grade, that if it's also okay to have ninth graders spaced out, why they wouldn't say, and maybe one grade level at middle and one grade level at high, um, on here, why it would only say the pre-K through three. And I, I mean, clearly, we, we are where we are.
So, I think, I think one of the issues and answer to that question is, that sheet came out a week ago. That was a little bit late in terms of informing school decisions about getting open and bringing kids back, right? And so, this community has been through a very long, months-long conversation about getting kids back and what that would look like. And so, you know, just, we have a plan, we have metrics. We, we're showing you that to show there's a relative alignment between those metrics, which gives us some confidence that we're doing the right thing, that we're moving in the right direction. And we're, we're, we're following our plan, and so, the next step of our plan, in yellow-green, which is where we are today, is to begin thinking about planning for bringing back the other option-one students and doing so safely. And so, that's, that's where, so, you know, I mean, in essence, they're, I mean, it's, it doesn't, it, it doesn't really work to ask the question, well, why didn't they say sixth grade and ninth grade? Because, you know, they don't know what our plan is, they just came out with this a week ago, you know, and so. Who, who knows what, what informed their decision-making, if they were looking at a preponderance of plans, if they were considering what other school divisions, you know, it's hard to answer that question, unfortunately.
Okay, I, I would want to, um, personally, uh, to try and seek out more information about what led them to the metrics that they have come up with, and the recommendations that they've come up with. I understand that our plan was in motion before this came out a week ago, and so, this comes out a week ago, and it looks like we are ahead of what they would have recommended, and we're working within that. Obviously, we're not going to pull kids back, because they put something out that shows that they're recommending less than what we have already done. But it certainly does give me pause to realize that we are already ahead of what they would recommend, and that our conversation is when we are going to put more in that would not be aligned with what they're saying, from what I'm hearing, that we are in the higher, we're in the orange for them. I know that we're, we have our own thing that we put together, but for the state thing, we are in the orange, we're in four out of five. And we are talking about doing the hybrid, which they have on their thing as do when you're in the low to lowest, and that we are in the four out of five, but we are having a conversation about doing what they're recommending in the lowest. So, that gives me pause, and I would want to understand, maybe from them, maybe from a CDC-VDH representative, why they, they are recommending that that only happened in the low to the lowest, and we're doing it, we're talking about doing it in the four out of five range.
Sorry, I was looking for a, a piece of guidance on here, um, that's just come out, and to see if it helped answer your question, but I don't, we'll have to get back with you.
Yeah, so, one thing I, I would, I'll just emphasize, what has not changed from the VDOE guidance, from what we received in the summer, is its guidance. So, it's their thinking to help inform our thinking, and the guidance continues to be, from the CDC, the VDH, the VDOE, to use local health experts to consider the local situation and what we believe is what we can best handle in Virginia Beach. We've done that even before that was recommended. Dr. Spence had already asked a group of physicians to advise us and help us develop a plan before we'd even received that advice from the CDC and the VDH and the VDOE. And so, he referenced even again tonight that he checked in with our local panel of physicians.
Not with the panel, but with some of the, the panel.
And they'll check in with the rest of the panel, it's, I think, 11 physicians in total. To make sure that they're comfortable with, uh, our discussion that we're having about bringing more students back in middle school and high school safely, so that, you know, all five of those health mitigation strategies, masks, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning and sanitizing, and contact tracing, all have to be working well. We may come to a point, particularly on contact tracing, many of you had questions about contact tracing. We've been fortunate that we haven't had hundreds of cases to deal with, we've had singleton cases. You've all heard, you, you, the community gets very alarmed, and rightly so, when they get a notification that school fill-in-the-blank had a, had a positive case. We've now had that happen three or four times. This is likely to be the new normal for us, so we're going to have a school each week. And when it gets to be several schools, multiple schools, more cases, and there's more stress on contact tracing and being able to handle the transmission, we may need to back off of in-person instruction. Again, the guidance would say that as well, when you cannot effectively contact trace and safely mitigate students, then the, the scale works in both ways, you can bring more kids back into in-person instruction, and then you need to phase back. So, one of the things that's going to, it, it's a blessing in disguise, is starting in a virtual environment, where our students and our teachers all met one another virtually, began their relationship there, migrate to in-person instruction, as we need to transition back away, they're, they're staying with the same teachers, correct? Don, Joe, I'm, I'm, that's, we have built the plan so that we're not changing the instructional schedule or the class assignments, the teacher-student relationship, whether you're in person or you're virtual, you, the classes remain the same.
Not necessarily.
If I may, it is, if I may, Dr. Bergen.
If I just give an example, we had a, an elementary school last week, where there was a particular classroom, where the students all needed to quarantine, we didn't assign them all a new classroom, right? That, that, that's the example I'm, I'm, I'm going to, sorry, Mrs. Edwards.
No, no, so this clearly needs to continue, and we have, so I'm proposing that we plan on, uh, Agenda Item 16 in our formal meeting, we will continue the workshop at that time.
And for the record, Madam Chair, I have Riggs, Edwards, and Weems in the queue, and of course, anybody else after that, so.
Right, and this, this particular conversation can be continued as well, okay? So, with that, we are adjourned until our 6:00 formal meeting.